I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we please stand for a pledge to the flag?
I asked that you were integral.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, for the record, this is a special public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 6:27 PM, the fourteenth day of March. We're convening in the Anner J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary, Mr. Thomas Figu, Jr., Acting School Business Administrator, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Mitchell Piscopo, Esquire, our Board Counsel. Meeting's open to the public. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
Present.
Trustee Kasaius.
Here.
Trustee Cruden.
Here.
Trustee Finerty.
Present.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Velado.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck is absent. President Broderick.
Here. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least forty-eight hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting, with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal, and notice was posted on the Bayonne Board of Education website.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Figu and Mr. Burnside for a presentation on the budget. If the trustees would like to move into other seats to...
Good evening, everybody. What we'd like to do is present from the business office and our finance committee, our proposed budget presentation for 2019-2020. Obviously, our budget during its creation takes a lot of things into consideration. In addition to the finances and the programs that we have in place, we also want to make sure we align with the district's mission statement that we have along with our... on our website and guides us in what we're doing as educators with our students and our community. Our budget calendar is posted above. We have February through March 2019, where we met with all of our administrators to discuss and prepare the school base and department budgets. On March 5, 2019, Governor gave his address. State aid figures were released on March 7. March 14, today, adoption and filing by the Bayonne Board of Tentative Budget, and our preliminary budget is going to be sent to the county superintendent, needs to be sent to the county superintendent, by March 20, next Wednesday. Preparation for the advertised budget would be April 22 with county approval. Last day to advertise the public hearing is May 3, and the deadline to adopt a budget is May 14. Zero-based budgeting model. Back in 2017, Dr. Wonko came in as interim superintendent, and he brought in zero-based budgeting, which allowed our budget managers, which are our principals, our directors, our supervisors, to control, own, and manage their budget on an everyday basis. Past practice would be November, December, January, budgets would be closed prior to zero-based budgeting, which made it tougher being a former principal, made it tough to run your buildings accordingly, because you couldn't plan into the near future. So with zero-based budgeting, the budgets stay open for the budget managers throughout the year. What the process is, again, principals, directors, department chairs, and department supervisors came up individually with appointment and met with the cabinet, which consisted of Dr. Wonko, Mr. Copaz, Dr. Degnan, myself, and Mr. Medici, Director of Special Services, and they presented, and Mr. Burnside as well, and presented their budgets based on your needs, whether it be school, department, or area, being a supervisor. Budget reviewed based on their needs and their requirements, but we also compared it to last year's budget. Last year, obviously, was the first time that we had zero-based, and we wanted to make sure during those meetings, we want a feedback from these principals and administrators to see how it worked. Did it work well? It's completely different, and their feedback was extremely positive. They liked the fact that they were able to create their budget, they liked the fact they were able to manage it, and they liked the fact they were able to keep their finances throughout the year. So, once we got that feedback, we were able to move forward. It was very successful last year. That being said, looking at our CAFRA report from last year that just came out last board meeting that was presented, looking at the budget from last year that was very positive from each level, each school, each location, we decided to keep those budgets pretty much flat, asking the principals, directors, and supervisors to see what they needed, to see what they had, to see what they don't need anymore, but in the end, make sure we keep them flat so that we can move forward, because these budgets were done prior to the aid being released. Along with the budget, we look at our enrollment. As of October of 2018, this past October, we're at ninety-six hundred students. We know that's going to go up, okay? And depending who we're asking, those numbers are nonexistent, or they're not going to happen, or they're different. The talk that I have all the time is, well, they're one-bedroom studios. That's all well and good, but in a few years, I may be selling my house that has two children that will no longer be there, I may move into a one-bedroom studio, and my house goes up for sale, and someone's going to move in with children, that will affect that number. So we know that number's going to go up, and we'll address that in a little bit. Meeting with finance, previously, finance committee. We were told, we were directed, to go back and originally look at a 2.57 increase with CAFRA bank cap. Once numbers were advertised and what aid was being dispersed, it was then recommended to us to create a budget at 1.99. Okay? So here we have the proposed budget for 1920 at 1.99 with the tax levy. Also, on the right-hand side, percentage change, you see the fluctuation between zeros and twos, threes, fives. If we went further and we had a longer screen, we were able to go back to 2008, '09, where there was an eight, above eight percent increase. The average of those changes throughout the year, as they happened, were 2.25. If a two percent was given every year, it would have saved some money along the way, and it would have been a consistent increase throughout the tax levy change, or percentage. Here we have our actual state aid, 9.16. State aid would be at $65 million that we have been awarded. And then what we're looking for, 2019 budget, itemization, a new K-8 math and science textbook adoption, sustained increase of employee benefits. Obviously, employee benefits will increase, we know that, we have to plan accordingly, as will the employee contractual obligations, making sure we meet those obligations with contracts that are in place, sustained increase in special education, which we know increases. Two world language teachers, we are mandated by CUSAC to provide a world language in our elementary schools. We do not have any at this point. Two world language teachers will allow us to start that process with CUSAC and provide world language for eighth grade. Administrators, assistant principals, we have two large buildings without coverage. We want to make sure we have coverage for those buildings. Panic buttons, Alyssa's Law was just signed. Schools are going to be required to have panic buttons installed at all locations that will, if activated, will alert police automatically, let them know there's a serious threat of situation in the school. Continuation of security camera upgrades at the elementaries, we are in the process from previous board meetings. We are outfitting the high school with updated cameras. It's a take down the old ones, replace the new ones. We're not running new wires, we're just replacing the technology, and we want, we will move forward at the elementary school to make sure we do the same, so all-in-one platform as well. Police wants access to our cameras in case there's a emergency situation, and we cannot do that right now, because we are on three different platforms. Genesis payroll, human resources, that's to make sure our payroll has a few more filters and levels of security in place. That's something we instituted this year, it's going to be an extra cost next year, we want to make sure it's built in. Smart boards, depending on where you are, every principal's come up and asked for new smart boards, because either they don't have them, or they're old and outdated. A rescue school was top of the line when it came to tech. Fast forward a few years, now they're outdated, some are not working, we would like, they would like to replace or add. There was no way we could meet their needs based on the budget with adding smart boards they requested. Our budget allows us to add one additional at each location, it'd be the principal's choice, administrator's choice, where they go. And then we also did an increase in teacher supply money. Teacher supply money throughout the district varied on building location. We added an increase, or a consistent amount, of teacher supply money for classrooms, so that every classroom in the district will have the same amount allocated for them. Budget costs per pupil, just against some of our neighbors, you can see Bayonne is the lowest, at $12,509 per pupil. Free and reduced percentages, it's hard to see on the bottom, but in 2013, 53 percent. Currently, we're at 58.18. Last year, we were down to 55 percent. I know some of the members of finance had a question on do these students move in. No, they didn't move in. What happened was, last year, we decided to go electronic, and we went online, and we lost the families submitting them, whether they didn't have access to internet, they didn't have a computer, or they didn't have a printed, a print-and-mouth sentiment if they wanted to do that. This year, what we did was, anyone who did not fill one out, we sent home a paper one as well, so that we could have that number where it is at 58. That's important to us as a district, selfishly what it should be, because that number ties directly into our E-rate. With that, our free and reduced percentages, we were just allowed to do a $2.1 million upgrade of our network security and our security on infrastructure, NAPs at 70 percent of the cost, so we only paid 30 percent of that to get that done. And Governor Murphy's funding plan, obviously announced to fund districts that are overprivileged to underfunded districts to a great extent, that would be us. If the additional state aid received over the next few years will allow us as a district to plan accordingly for collective bargaining agreements as they come up. More educators and personnel, and obviously, increased healthcare costs, while at the same time keeping the tax to a reasonable level, increase to a reasonable level. Facilities, our average building's ninety-three years old, we spent a lot of money on trying to upkeep our buildings, and I know we spoke at board meetings about what are we doing with our buildings, what are we doing with location and lack of classrooms. So that point drives moving forward and having a plan in place to make sure we do have a location, we do have a building, we do have a place for these students to be, and allow us to renovate and rebuild some of the schools that are in dire need of improvements that are beyond our budget to repair. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go back to our agenda. The first item on our agenda is we've received a communication on a resignation. That's included in your packets. On that, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by President Broderick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
And we have a second by Vice President Wilbeck. So on that motion and second, on accepting communication, trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Kasaius.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up is our only resolution for this evening. I will read it into the record. Whereas the Bayonne Board of Education's tentative budget for the school year 2019-2020 includes sufficient funds to provide curriculum and instruction, which will enable all students to achieve the Common Core state standard and the New Jersey Core curriculum content standards in compliance with NJSA 18A, NJAC Title VI and VI-A. Whereas the district is going to be, is going to, I'm sorry, I'll repeat that. Whereas the district is going to the 1.99 percent tax levy cap of $69,671,718. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Bayonne Board of Education amends and adopts the following tentative budget for the 2019-20 school year. The 2018-19 total appropriations, general fund, $136,835,060. Special revenue is $9,310,575, for a total of $146,145,635. Less the anticipated revenues, $67,163,342. Special revenue, $9,310,575, for a total of $76,473,917. Taxes to be raised is $69,671,718. The total 2019-2020 school tax levy is $69,617,718. Be it further resolved that the superintendent and the acting school business administrator are hereby directed to establish the budget for the school year 2019 and '20, submit the said budget to the interim executive county superintendent, provide the certificate, and report for school taxes, the A4F, for the 2019-2020 school year, to the City of Bayonne Clerk and the Hudson County Board of Taxation by May 14, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I believe I have two questions on the resolution. First up, Mr. D'Angelo, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Mr. Woods has a budget question.
G. Woods, 128 West 39th Street, Bayonne. I'm just asking to make sure that the money that's being appropriated is going to cover all the salaries, building repairs, and other expenditures that are necessary for the district.
But what the centralists has told me, that at that number, we will be able to cover all salaries increases, healthcare, everything that we would need to do. Less than that, we'd have a little bit of a problem.
But if we have something that happens to a building, you know, the average age is ninety-three years old, you do have money in the account, but, for example, the steam pipe, shelter at the pool, those types of things, we cannot just...
We have a motion by President Broderick and a second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Kasaius.
No.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
No.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
No.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot trustee Alonzo.
I was going to say that there's one item in this budget that we could put on hold and wait a year, and if we wait for the panic button...
Michael, I think you need to...
Oh, no problem, yes. Just so everybody knows, if we wait for the panic button initiative, which is a promise to be state-funded, we only would have to raise taxes 1.5 percent. And so if this budget doesn't pass tonight, we do have a week to still rework everything and get it done. So, all the teachers' contracts are funded, health insurance, I'm voting no.
Okay, and President Broderick.
I just want to say, I think what we're trying to do here is create some stability in the city, and I think a number around two is a pretty normal amount. Correct, we can, we could put something off possibly, but by doing that, it could end up costing us a lot more in the future. By taking care of matters now, I think we're a lot better off. Also gives us money to look at certain problems, like we just said to Mr. Woods, if something was to happen, and allocate money somewhere else. I just think that, you know, one of the problems that might come up, and I might as well mention it right now, is that we did receive extra money for the first, you know, second time in many, many years. We're still somewhere around a little over, I guess, $50 million that we should be getting, so we don't have that money, and I don't think we'll ever get that money. That being said, you know, we have to go forward with what we have. I think we have to start a structure of finances that we can live with on a regular basis, and I think the city people would like to see us say that, I know this is going to be around this number. We don't want to have a roller coaster where one year we're saying zero, next year we're saying 5.9. That's just not fair, and I don't think people can live that way. So, the point I was trying to bring up is, once, one other item that's going to be brought up is that we got almost, I guess, $6.9 million for the preschool program. I think people got to understand, that's for the preschool program. We've never had the preschool program before, it's brand-new, it's money for that, it isn't money that we can use to buy books or anything else, it's simply for that. And in fact, that program, as good as it's going to be, because it's given a full day of, you know, preschool to maybe 500 young children in our city, it'll probably end up costing us still a little more money, because we're going to, we're going to need more custodians, we're going to need more fixing up rooms, so I think, you know, the cost is minimal compared to what we're going to get for it. But I just wanted people to realize that it's the 5.4 that we received, 6.9 really has nothing to do with this budget. So, all that being said, I say yes.
Okay, budget passes. At this time, I'd like to get a motion. We need to adjourn for a quick recess to get set up for our next presentation. Is there a motion?
Our motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. So I have a motion and a second to do a quick recess. Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Kasaius.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick. It is 6:53. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. It is 7:03. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
Present.
Trustee Kasaius is out. Trustee Cruden.
Present.
Trustee Finerty is out. Trustee Munoz.
Present.
Trustee Ryan is out. Trustee Velado.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck is out. President Broderick.
Present.
President, you had something you wanted to...
Yes, I'd just like to say one more thing regarding the, well, not regarding the budget, but regarding the money we received from the state this year, on both sides of the 5.4 million that we received for our budget, and then the 6.9 plus for the preschool program. I just wanted to thank, I think it's, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mayor Davis, and also, I guess, Assemblyman Chevalotti, for all the work that they did down at the state level to bring those funds to Bayonne, which we still, we need. So, I just wanted to say thank you to those two.
Great. At this time, I'm going to open up this part of the meeting for our superintendent CSA search, anyone that's coming in late. The board had started with a planning meeting, and in the week of February 19th to the 21st, we held interviews and had eleven different focus groups from the community come in to speak to our group. There was an online survey that opened on February 11th, and it ran until February 25th, in which it was then closed. And I guess the fruits of all that information is why we're here tonight, the Bayonne School District Leadership Profile Report. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dwight Fenning. Dr. Dwight Fenning, our senior associate for HYA. I'll turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Fenning.
Thank you very much. And I think, you know, officially tonight, after we arrived here late this afternoon, and the sun was still out, we've seen every kind of weather, and every day we've been in Bayonne. The first day, we almost froze to death with the wind, we saw a lot of snow, and then tonight, today was the best day, by the way. Thank you again for having us join you with the results of our initial work. When we developed the leadership profile, as Gary said, we met with several groups on the 19th and 21st of February, and then the survey was open. I'd like to thank those, because I know there were some, some of the board members involved and some community members involved in putting a push on the survey near the end, when we saw our numbers were low, and it got it up to 464 pretty quickly. So I thank you for that. On the right side in your folder, you have the full version of the, of the, of the report, the leadership profile. On the right side, on the left side, excuse me, there's kind of a PowerPoint that we'll use from our seats that is a summary of all of that. First of all, in the beginning, we usually put a little, a little historical piece in, not a major one. One of my colleagues wrote the history of Bayonne, and I couldn't put it in, or it would have taken twenty pages. And I think, you know, in speaking, we try to give a brief piece of what happened in the past, and then, and kind of where you are now. Also, we try to give some data based on the information that's been provided to us by the, by the office at this time. He just wants to slide the mic a little. Because we can't see each other.
Yeah, exactly. One can slide, yeah, thank you.
I'll add it from student who's still a little...
There you go, we're good.
That's better.
But now I can't see.
I couldn't see the gentleman.
I can't see, Mr. Broderick.
So I'm looking at it, kind of playing a peek-a-boo game.
All right. And neither one of us were winning.
Yeah, we weren't winning on that one, thank you, I appreciate it. I was just trying to figure it all out.
All right.
The zero-based coach. I can't see him either.
We then give a brief demographic piece about the number of students presently and the current budget size. And again, when we look at this report in the way it's presented, it's presented that way, pieces of it are boilerplate, because we are using it to guide the search, not to be the end-all. And then we do, we talk about it in the PowerPoint piece, about how it presents the findings of what we did over that period of time. We talked in the focus groups, we collected information, you know, regarding the strengths of the district, the challenges it'll be facing in the coming years, and the desired characteristics for the new superintendent. And the online survey was used to collect, you know, data that was relevant to ranking the desired characteristics, as well as kind of giving a statement about the state of the district at the current time. And as we go through those, we will certainly, you know, talk about them in a little bit more detail. The page with the numbers shows you the number of people we met with by number 118, 464 in the online survey, and we totaled that up for 582.
Can I ask a question at this time?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, a couple of us, we were, the committee, we were discussing, so it says here, you met with three board members.
Well, that was through, and the data in the back on the regular report says, you know, they were largely informal things, where people attended meetings. And what we said tonight was, if board members, whether it's this group, it has to be this group, it can't be the entire board, we would gladly spend another, more time with you if you needed that.
Well, I under, it was my understanding, when we initially signed the contract with HYA, that every board member, all nine of them, would be interviewed.
No, it was five.
No, every board member, regardless if they were eligible or not, would be interviewed, like a phone interview, that's what was said in the initial presentation.
Okay.
So I think that it would be fair that all nine board members are interviewed.
We'll correct that, okay.
Because they all are elected trustees, and they have something to add to the conversation.
The conflicted, our attorney advised us on the last meeting that they could speak here, but that they couldn't be interviewed.
Okay.
That was advised to us by the attorney.
So we will...
So, okay, I...
We'll make that contact with you.
I want to clarify that, because I was told they should get interviewed, because they'll still have to work with the person, even though they...
Is our attorney here?
Well, he has to clarify.
Is he still here?
I don't know.
Right. Needless to say, we will, we will do that.
Right, right, whether it be five or nine, I just think everyone, yeah, that's my understanding. So when I saw three, I said, who are these three?
Well, it was three.
Because it wasn't me. Well, I got a lot to say.
We said sidebar conversations and whatever, people who attended meetings. We said sidebar conversations, and whatever, people who attended meetings. So that was, yeah.
Thank you.
But we will do that.
Okay.
And then, you know, we can also add that data to the report, because this is a draft.
Excellent.
If there's any change to it.
Okay.
All right, so you see the, are you waiting that opinion? We don't?
No, we can go ahead until we, yeah, I think, right? Is that...
I was going to say, I think I know the answer, but I'm not sure.
It's up to the chair, it's up to the chair, actually.
Go forward, yes.
Okay. So you see the numbers on the chart of the participants that were there in total? And when we do the report from the PowerPoint, when we talk about the strengths, the challenges, and the characteristics, this is a watered-down version of what's in the actual report, a little bit watered down. All right, we'll now hit on the strengths portion.
Since Mr. Piscopo is back, maybe we can readdress that question we just had.
On the surveys?
On the surveys.
And the question is, you know, we said we're going to go back and talk to all five members that are here now. Are the other members permitted to be interviewed by us?
No, they're conflicted.
Okay, that's that.
So we'll re, we'll interview the two that are missing.
Well, the thing is, none of us...
No, we're going to do five. We're going to do all five.
Because we saw three, and we all acted, you get it? So we all established none of us were...
We're going to do all five.
All right, then we'll do all five.
Okay.
Okay, we're now going to report on the consistently reported strengths of the district.
Thank you, Dwight. And as was said, this is truly a watered-down version of the larger report. So one of the things that we learned is that Bayonne, the public school district is a very proud educational community. Several focus group participants talked to us about the rich diversity of the school district, and what they believe were multiple opportunities provided for the students by the school district as contributors to that pride. Some of those things were the strong curricular program, exceptional co-curricular activities, the fine and performing arts sports programs, and other specialized programs. We also heard that the pre-K eight program, which housed, which is housed in the 11 neighborhood schools, they believed it maintained a recognizable student-centered focus. Although, and you'll hear them later, they did cite that there were some issues within that, that often complicate the delivery of sound educational programming. Okay, so they liked the program, because they're housed in the neighborhood, they provide a student-centered focus, but they did share some items with us that needed to be addressed, and you'll hear that from my colleague. There was a great appreciation for the staff, for the teachers, and the building-level administrators, because they felt that they really are dedicated to the students of Bayonne. Many of the Bayonne professionals actually live in the district, have lived in the district, or have attended district schools. So that was a high area of pride for, for the focus groups. And then, one of the things that was mentioned was that returning to a model of urban excellence is really a goal for many of the folks that we talked to. And they believe that to do so, we needed to have, really tap into the potential that's in the community, the grant funding opportunities that are out there, and perhaps business partnerships that perhaps would be catalysts to get to that goal.
Okay, consistently reported challenges. Now, the focus groups and individual conversations with participants expressed concerns over continued reduction in funding and possible misuse of funding. Specific cuts made to personnel directly affecting class size and program support were frequently viewed as the board's method of weeding out specific programs and positions for the sake of perceived efficiency. Many staff members openly detailed an increase in professional responsibilities without the man-hours or resource to carry them out. The school facilities in Bayonne are old, and either in need of renovation, repair, or in need of replacement by new facilities. Groups frequently mentioned the need to restructure the grade level configuration for the purpose of equalizing class size and properly delivering programs. There was a dialogue indicating that the need for the clarification of board member roles, and clarification of their responsibilities within the context of board meeting, behavior, and the operation of the school district. Given the relative newness of the elected board, and the conflicted nature of a few members, there is a major concern, be it perceived or real. That board micro-management and influence over central office decision-making and personnel and program matters requires attention. In concert with input regarding board relationships was the opinion that district administration need to be more unified in approach. While there are many talented individuals among the administrative staff, communication between and among them clearly needs improvement if an effective administrative team is going to lead all aspects of the district.
And finally, the part of the report that dealt with the consistently reported desired characteristics, and then we summarized more of them at the end. The new superintendent should have demonstrated successful experience in serving diverse urban communities, in developing a visionary operational and academic strategy for the forward movement of the district. The new superintendent should provide evidence of successful community engagement. We think that was mentioned to us quite, quite a bit. And transparency built upon trust, honesty, integrity, regardless of the issues at hand and problems to be solved. The new superintendent must demonstrate strength as an educational evaluator, with the ability to assess the talents of all current staff and make firm decisions about appropriately building a system of improvement and enrichment for all staff members. There was, you know, there was a lot of talk about people leaving, coming and going, you know, the turnover of staff, and the reasons for that. And the reasons are varied. It's expected by most focus groups that the new superintendent will demonstrate experience in embracing an educational community through creating and supporting a district climate not dominated by politics and political correctness. And I would tell you, we hear, we, I will tell you, regardless of what you think about the unique political situations in Bayonne, or whatever they may be, we hear that everywhere. All right? So, you know, that...
Is that your verbiage, or was that said by someone, political correctness?
That's my verbiage.
Oh, okay. So you're just paraphrasing, no one actually said that...
No, no, no.
There's a PC environment going on or not.
Right, that's right. We kind of paraphrased that from what we heard.
All right.
And, yeah, yeah, and sometimes when we write these reports, as I said, and actually you may see it more in the comments that may be attributed to a certain group, that you might be able to pinpoint some of that, but, you know, certainly we don't do it that way, because we keep people anonymous. The new superintendent will require excellent communication skills to foster openness, honesty, and integrity, in quickly rebuilding sound relationships between and among all stakeholder groups. Now, there's a feeling that they need to be worked on. And there's been some things that have gone on, both in the past, and maybe a distant past, that people still remember, you know, that, that they, they keep, you know, bringing back and reiterating. Significant communication gaps between and among board members, as well as central office, and various community groups. And I'll speak to that a little bit on the survey, too, because we start to see a pattern there, will have to be addressed by the new superintendent. It goes without saying that, you know, that when we, when we take, these are opinions and perceptions by people, all right? We're not saying, what, you know, if something's totally ridiculous, we don't, we might ask for some facts on it, but, you know, these are opinions and perceptions by people. On the survey, now, you have a copy of the survey with you, and it's a nice, you know, it does a little color portion and all of that, but, you know, there are two pieces of it that I will, that I will talk about. Regarding the state of the district, which is actually the first blue chart that you can hardly read, but if you look in the report, you might be able to read it better. The actual report, it's a little bit bigger, all right? So when you talk about the state of the district, it's an item analysis, and it talks about, you know, what these 464 people had to say about it. And, you know, generally, they say technology is integrated into the classroom, district schools are safe, the district employs effective teachers and administrators, teachers personalize instructional strategies, these are the top things that people think are going on. And district technology infrastructure is sufficient to support the 21st century learning. If you look at that chart, it's kind of interesting, because out of all the members, you know, overall says, please rate the overall quality of education in the district, and it comes out to be 55 percent. You know, the quality is at 55 percent. So that means, you know, you're probably going to see a dichotomy of thought on that. If you look at the administrators, there were 21 who took that, and the teachers, there were 150 who took that, you know, they're in the 90th, they're saying 95 percent satisfaction, and the teachers saying 71 percent satisfaction. And then if you look at the community members, the parents of students attending the district, the students and support staff, they're somewhere between 35 and 50 percent. Now, that gets back to that communication piece, you know? Usually that's an indication that there needs to be better communication. I usually put it in terms of, people need to know what other people are doing. That's number one. And then, how does it, how does it trickle down so that people, you know, if I feel really good about the job I'm doing, and someone sees me doing that job, and they don't feel so good about it, or as good as I feel, then what's going on? It's either not being communicated, or there's some gap in there that needs to be solved. That's all. Now, then it breaks it down by vision and values, teaching and learning, community engagement, and then management. And I'll just use a couple of examples again. For vision and values, you know, the district provides a clear and compelling vision for the future. Well, 86 percent of the administrators, and 65 percent of the teachers, you know, basically said, that's happening. But if you look at the other percentages, they go between 23 and 50. So again, as we look at that, we're saying, all right, you know, you're going to have to have someone who's a communicator. And every group we met with, you know, and I'm saying this because you all, to me, it's pretty public, you know, the current interim superintendent has improved those things, all right, since he's been here. I didn't hear anyone say anything different about that. And you can look through those various things to see how those, how those match up. Teaching and learning, you know, one example, the district provides a well-rounded, you know, educational experience for all students. You know, there you see ratings to be a little bit higher. You know, again, the administrators, 81 percent, teachers and support staff, 65 percent, but the other groups, community members, parents, and students, not so high. So you begin to see some, you know, at least some dichotomy of thought there. If you go to the next chart, you know, the leadership profile item analysis, and here the respondents were, you know, asked to select four statements that they deem most important in selecting a new superintendent. You know, and I, and I think that's just kind of a general thing, like, what do you want to see in this new person? And, you know, one of them was to recruit, employ, and retain effective personnel throughout the district. Everybody, 42 percent, thought that was, you know, one of the top things. Administrators, 33 percent, community members, 41 percent, parents, 43 percent. Then you do students, support staff, and teacher. Well, the students don't do a lot of that, all right? They don't, they don't get concerned a lot about hiring and retaining staff, but you see, most of the others, they're not that distant. So while they're not real high, they're pretty close in the way they feel about it. Fostering a positive professional climate of mutual trust and respect among the faculty and staff, you know, if you composite all the groups, that was the number two. And if you look at some of the people going across, well, for the administrators, 76 percent of them felt that was the most important, as opposed to 33, 27, 35, 58, and 58. So when you look at those things, you can see who thought that was ranked, you know, highest for them, or lowest for them, and you can get an idea based on those four statements of how they felt. And then, you know, in summary, off the charts, the top-rated leadership profile characteristics were recruit and employ, retain effective personnel, foster a positive professional climate, effectively plan and manage the long-term financial health of the district, establish a culture of high expectations for all students, and understand and be sensitive to the needs of the diverse population. Now, we take that information, and we take the information that we got, you know, that's detailed, in the detailed report from all of the groups, and after seeking input from everyone, you know, Bayonne's going to look for a strong leader who possesses the following characteristics. And I would tell you, it's not likely they'll have all of them, but they should have most of them, when we look at candidates. Administrative and teaching experience with an urban suburban environment, that's been said to us by a lot of groups. Establishing a culture of high expectations, that was said both in the survey and by a lot of groups. Excellent understanding of long and short-term equitable budget planning and implementation, supported by a strong sense of financial acumen and responsibility. And I think that's, that's important. You know, you, you've had, you had turnover in some of those positions, so someone, you know, you have an interim who understands budgeting and all of that, you have an interim business administrator right now. So, you know, some changes are going to be made there, but this is also going to be a person who leads that charge. Experience in evaluating school safety plans. I had, you know, we only talked to two people about school safety. One of them was your police chief, and the other one was one of the people who was in this building. And they provided a lot of good information about how it's, how it's grown, and kids feel generally safe, but think it ought to be safer. But I don't know that kids will, in the environment we have today, that any of us will ever be satisfied with the safety in a school district, and that doesn't mean you're dissatisfied. I think people want more, and I don't think that's ever going to change from this point forward. Someone who's been formally trained in negotiations, it could be important, understands the need for consistent contract administration. It's interesting, because contract administration is always a bugaboo of mine. You know, sometimes, it's kind of like running for election. When you run for election, it's fun, and then you win, then you got to do the work. You know, contract negotiations are fun, and then you have a contract, and it's got to be administered. And when, when contracts, when contracts are administered, that's when problems occur, you know, because people don't know the language and all of that. So contract administration is just as important as the negotiations piece. Holding the staff accountable was, was brought to us by several groups. Being familiar with recruiting methods and selection, political savvy on every level. You know, I've heard you talk tonight about, you know, again, hoping that the state will, you know, give some funds back to Bayonne. We all know the history of that for most people who apply for assistance, and, and I think that's going to have to be something that is a consistent barrage, but, but people understand what they have to do to get the attention, which includes board members going through their organization, administrators going through theirs, and also, you know, and principals have an organization as well. Understanding of the necessity to build and maintain a productive, excuse me, working relationship with the Bayonne district that's focused on a vision. You've got, you're getting a little more of that now. You know, you seem to be headed in the right direction, where you're going to say, now, this person will come in and pick up, maybe on the work, the interim's done, and move forward. Understanding and sensitive to the needs of a diverse community, that's really important. And then, understanding how to foster a professional climate of mutual trust and respect among staff, administration, and the board. That's never a foregone conclusion, and it's never perfect, but, you know, at least have everyone have an understanding of how they all work. And then, of course, be welcoming and transparent, and developing a professional presence, you know, being there, people see this person out there, which a lot of people have commented again about your interim, and they're, they're seeing something that they, they appreciate. And again, you know, these are perceptions and opinions, you know, everything is summarized based on that. This helps us find someone for you. Right now, so you know, as of this date, as of this date, there are, and I'm not giving away any confidential information, all right, but as of this date, there are 14 candidates for the position. 11 of them are either sitting superintendents, or have superintendent experience. That percentage is pretty high, out of the 14. Normally, we wouldn't see that. We'd see almost a 60-40 kind of thing.
Any internal candidates?
We're not going to discuss confidential matters tonight.
Oh, I...
No, no, I, no, I'm...
You didn't specify, you just gave numbers, I just wanted to know. I mean, you wouldn't say the name, but...
No, we're not, we're not going to do that tonight.
Okay.
Okay? With all due respect.
That's fine.
Yeah. Nine of them have doctorates, seven of them are from out of state, because I know people were concerned about, what's our outreach on that?
Seven out of state?
Yeah. So, that's where we are. Our next step on the candidates, we will be making contact with them, probably beginning of next week, to set up preliminary screening interviews with them, to see who, begin to see who we will bring back, you know, to you on the 23rd of April, as a slate of candidates, whatever that number is.
Dwight, one correction there, the 17th of April.
I'm sorry.
Have we moved the date?
Yeah, 17th of April.
That's because of the vacation, right.
At 6:00 PM. For everybody out there in television.
Okay, I'm sorry. I looked at an old thing in my notebook.
Yeah, that's good.
Seventeenth. We will bring you a slate of candidates, and we'd say you ought to consider them, you know, for interview, whether you wanna interview all of them that we present, or just some of them.
Yes, that's what the notice, six P.M.
Okay. That concludes what we have to say now, we're pleased to answer any questions you may have about any of this. And again, I'd like to thank, I, I don't know who did all the push in the end on the survey, but it helped.
Well, I think everyone got it out. I think it was collective effort, so.
Yeah.
When we saw it was so low, we wanted participation, so we put it out on social media and other places.
And, and the fourteen candidates, I mean, this stays open until we present the slate, so, you know, we're gonna still recruit, try to recruit. We've got a couple people we're talking to as recruits that haven't committed yet. You know, they'll have to commit or not real soon.
You see some very detailed comments, some glaring comments.
Yeah.
I think that just from some of the comments here, it looks like the board, we have a long way to go as far as community trust and engagement, because just reading some of these comments, it doesn't seem like they have a lot of confidence, at least the people who took this survey.
Yeah.
The, obviously, facilities is a big thing, but we knew, we, we knew that. But, you know, the, it's interesting is the leadership qualities, and I just gotta say publicly, I'm, I'm really sad to see Dr. Wanko go, because it seems like everyone who took this survey kind of gauged their hope for a superintendent on Dr. Wanko's qualifications and his demeanor. So, yeah.
Yeah, we, and again, we don't, you know, talk about people per se, but you're absolutely correct.
Can you hear me? The, just a question, just in general. Say at a board meeting, generally people that come here, come here because they're not happy about something. You know, the happy person's generally sitting home watching TV right now. But someone who's concerned about something that's going right, they'll show up. Do you find that with a survey like this, that it's gonna be mostly, do you get more surveys, you think, that are from people that are saying, you know, here's the problems over there, as opposed to people that think it's going pretty good, but they don't, they generally don't send in a survey or something like that?
Survey itself, it's hard to tell. With the focus groups, it's easier to tell whether we have a more starkly aggressive group or not. And there were a couple of those, but not, most of them were not. I really enjoyed meeting with your students. I mean, you know, I met, in the end, I think we had fifty high school students here.
I love the, I love the comments by the high school kids, do not treat us like elementary students. I love that, that was great.
Yeah. And they, we met in this room, and it was full. I think we had fifty-eight high school kids. And it was, and, you know, and then we had a group of about twenty eighth graders, roughly twenty.
About two dozen eighth graders.
Yeah, yeah. Because, you know, and, and they, you know, it was interesting, even, even that day, some of them, you know, well, we're in the high school, you know, or, but, you know, they, they have, they have a lot of good things to say. You know, and, and, and for the eighth graders, you know, I try to tell them, you know, you're looking, you're, you're gonna be here to see a lot of things in the next four years. And for the high schoolers, for the seniors, I always tell them, you know, you've seen things, what do you, what do you think, you know, about where you're going? So, they, they were very good. But all of the groups were very good and very frank. You know, it was difficult to meet with central office as a group because of their responsibilities and what they were doing, so we kind of picked them up individually, and, and they had some really interesting things, and, and a few of the principals, too.
And I would add to that, that even when there were negative things, we always started with that first question about what's, what's working. So we did get a balance of, you know, and, and as we said, everyone that came before is very happy with where they live. There's a pride about where they live. So there, there were some positive comments around being in Bayonne.
The, you know, the one, we had one disappointment, that we dealt with one teacher, but there were one-hundred-and-fifty teachers who participated in the survey. I don't know the reasons for that, I'm not gonna generalize on that. You know, there's a lot of things that go on with commitments and responsibilities that people have. So, you know, I don't know if it's a scheduling issue or whatever, but one-hundred-and-fifty teachers did participate in the survey, and that was helpful for us.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the public meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President Broderick was gonna, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question at this time, you're welcome to. If anybody, any comments? If not, if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Trustee Cruden.
I have a second panel motion.
Okay, so on that motion, and second to adjourn, Trustee Alonso, Trustee Cruden, Trustee Munoz.
For Carol, yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
And President Broderick. It is, it is seven-thirty-four. Our meeting's over, we won't return.